In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of the business for the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Please spell your name for us. The testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under the third reading. On the second and last meeting of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. And we do have an open mic tonight. We're going to start, however, with the Mayor's Award of Excellence. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, members of the City Council, thank you for the opportunity once again to present the Mayor's Award of Excellence, this time for the month of March, and it's being presented to Heavy Equipment Operator, Richard Rick Schole. He's worked for the city since 1999 in the Street Maintenance Division of the Public Works Sector. Fleet Services Superintendent Jim Childs nominated Rick in the categories of Customer Relations and Productivity for his consistent willingness to accept any challenge, especially in his role as the backup supervisor for the Fleet Services Garage. Jim said that Rick has been asked to fill in many times and has always performed admirably. An example was last fall when the supervisor had to take an extended leave during the normal time for winter equipment preparation. Jim said the preparation was demanding even for a seasoned veteran. He said Rick scheduled and oversaw all preseason, snow removal, equipment service, installation, and testing while also doing an excellent job of managing the normal daily shop operations. Jim said working together as a group is part of the Fleet Services culture, but like any successful organization, the employees need someone to provide direction and focus. He said he was confident that Rick and the group of professionals he directed would have the equipment ready for the winter season, and indeed, they did. Jim said there is not one single thing I can point to that stands out as extraordinary, but having the responsibility and exercising the responsibility of ensuring equipment is ready for the Lincoln winter is stressing, to say the least, and Rick handled it very, very well. So it's our pleasure today to present Rick Schole with the Mayor's Award of Excellence for March. Please join me in congratulating Rick for his hard work and his commitment to the city of Lincoln. I think Roger Feiger wanted to say a word or two?
I think Roger nominated me.
Jim and Fred are going to talk? Okay.
Basically, Rick just...
Introduce yourself first, please.
Excuse me. Jim Childs, Fleet Services Superintendent.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome. Rick is just, basically, has a great work ethic. He's anything you ask Rick to do, always willing to do. He's been that way from day one, and he really understands how important the fundamental of a good fleet operation is to the city as a whole. And with that, I just congratulate him, and it's a real pleasure to work with him.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Roger?
Good example to follow.
Roger Feiger, Public Works. I'm here on behalf, Mickey, as extends her apologies not being able to be here today and acknowledge this achievement and appreciation for Rick and what he does. Clearly, just an example of dedicated employees, and while no one event stood out as extraordinary, for many of us, as that equipment was running all winter long and clearing streets and we didn't have a lot of breakdowns, clearly, that's extraordinary. And Rick, thank you so much for everything that you do for us. It's appreciated. On behalf of Mickey, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Roger. Thank Mickey for me, please.
Please say a few words.
We've got a very good group we work with. Our superintendent and our supervisor make us want to work. It makes a big difference and makes us willing to do what we need to do to get it done. It's a very good group that we work with, the whole group. So it makes life a lot easier when we're able to get along and do it. Thank you very much for the award.
Thank you. Do you have family here?
Yes, my...
I would consider we introduce those...
There's my wife right here.
In the interest of domestic connectivity at your house, why don't you introduce her? Go ahead. Go ahead, introduce her to us, if you would, please.
This is my wife, Kathy Schole.
Thank you very much for letting it work for us. Thank you. Thank you for all you do. Go ahead, if you want to, please.
All right. Our first item will be our public hearing consent agenda, items one through five.
Anybody who'd like to speak to these items? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right. If not, we can vote on the one item we have under consent agenda, be item two. This was introduced by Camp.
Second.
Second by Trent. Discussion, color roll.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next, our public hearing liquor resolutions. We do request those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and to sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Those giving testimony on liquor licenses are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. And I will call items six and seven together. They are the application of Longwell's for an upgrade from a Class I liquor license to a Class C liquor license at 350 Canopy Street, and the related manager application of Eric Marsh.
Come right up. You've got to introduce yourself for us. There you go.
Please raise your right hand.
I'm Greg Greeter, and this is Kevin Drought.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be? Thank you.
And I'm general counsel for the Bar at the Yard LLC. Eric Marsh is the managing member, as you can see from number seven. He is out of town today on business, but Kevin is going to speak briefly to the application for the upgrade to the Class C liquor license. So I'll let Kevin.
Kevin Drought. I am the operating partner at Longwell's. Thanks for the opportunity today. We just celebrated our one-year anniversary on Saturday. We've been in business down at the rail yard, and a lot of our guests have enjoyed our food and our offerings, spirits-wise, our ninety or so taps of beer. But we've had a number of requests from our guests to offer carryout. So we have a lot of beer that is not available everywhere else in town, and they wanted the opportunity to take some home with them. So we would like to have our license changed from the on-premise only to an on- and off-premise. That's our application today. Thank you for the time.
Questions? John?
Thank you very much for coming. I guess you mentioned on the off-sale element, where you're across the street from the student housing. Can you share with us how that might be affected there?
Well, I know the Canopy law office are across the street. I'm not sure of the designation as a campus housing unit, but we have...
Privately owned, but it's essentially student housing.
We have a security staff. We have our bar staff. We've worked with Conan Schaefer from the Lincoln Police Department. We've had him in the building a couple of times to help us with controlling any underage consumption. We issue wristbands. I think we've been very diligent in doing that and very secure in making sure that we aren't serving any minors or serving people that are over-intoxicated. So we're very thorough with that process.
Could you address, you mentioned you do the monitoring. You did have a violation last June 21st?
Yes, sir, we did. That was actually self-reported by myself. It was during the World Cup soccer event. We had some fans from one of the European countries that had been out in the yard all day long, in the sun, and having some drinks. And at the conclusion of the match that they were watching after about two hours, there were two people that I was concerned about that between the beer that they had drank and the weather, I thought that possibly some heat stroke might have set in. So I actually called and asked an ambulance to come out and check on those two individuals.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Make sure you sign in.
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please. I'm sorry, staff question?
Do you want staff at all on that? Okay. Never mind.
Next item, please.
All right. I'll call items eight and nine. They're the application of Amsterdam Falafel and Kebab for a Class I liquor license at 808 R Street, Suite 201, and the related manager application of Bennett Amador. Would you, gentlemen, raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the City Council. My name is Sean Kelly, 7134 Pacific Street, Omaha, Nebraska, appearing on behalf of the applicant today. Also with me to my right is the manager applicant, Bennett Amador. This is a falafel and kebab concept that has one location in the Omaha-Dundee area. It's approximately 1,800 square feet. We're submitting an I application today, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. I'm John.
Would you mind just sharing a little bit more? Maybe you have a PR opportunity here on the business and how you've done in Dundee?
Sure, I can give a brief overview. I'm sure Bennett could give you in more detail, but very small area, so approximately 1,800 square feet. Kebabs, falafel, not a huge extended menu, but the items they do do, they do very well, I know from a lot of experience.
Thank you. Bennett Amador, 730 South 11th Street, Apartment A1. Yeah, we've been in Dundee for eight years, and we're partnering with the Flagship Restaurant Group to expand our concept. And we're very fortunate, very happy to be here in Lincoln, and look forward to a great relationship with the city and providing a really excellent street food. It's modeled after sort of European street-style food, where it's a fast casual-style dining. Just go up, get your sandwich, your salad, real quick. Like Sean said, we just have a few things on the menu. There's kebab, two types of falafel, curry fries, which sort of encompass all of Dundee. It's the best advertising in the world, is aromatic, so. And just some soup. And we'll have, I believe, three or four different canned beers, and so people can have a drink with their sandwich.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right. I'll call items 10 and 11. They're the application of Stevo's Lounge for a Class C liquor license at 110 West Fletcher Avenue, Number Three, and the related manager application of Steve Overton. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Wes Goransson, and my address is 1701 Morton Street in Lincoln. Thank you for consideration of the Class C liquor license by Stevo's Lounge LLC and Mr. Overton. I'm representing him here today, and Mr. Overton is also with me to provide testimony and residence to the application. This liquor application is in the former location that was previously the Highlander Bar and Grill, which is in northwest Lincoln, in an area known as the Highlands. He envisions that this establishment will serve as a karaoke bar, which is something that he has previous experience in managing. As manager of the business, I believe in the letter that you all have, it stated that he had not yet completed his required management training, but he did do so on April 9th, and will require that all of his employees who will be handling alcohol will also do so. Again, thank you for your consideration, and either Steve or myself would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Roy?
Mr. Overton, in this letter, there's a lot of violations in the past, dating back to 1980 and coming up to 2009. Traffic violations, DWI, this kind of stuff. And when we see this kind of thing, we're a little concerned. Can you tell us about what's going on here and why we should feel comfortable?
Well, up until a period of about 10 years ago, I guess I just made a lot of mistakes, did a lot of things I should not have done. And in the last nine, 10 years, I've tried to straighten everything out, get it all back to normal, so I can do the things I need to do and do it right and get into business here and hopefully keep this on the straight and narrow as well.
Have you had a liquor license previously?
Yes, sir.
And were there any violations on that license?
No. That was in 1990, I believe. Way back.
Okay. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Would you like to say anything? Do you have...
I would just say, Steve Overton is my name, 1241 North 56th Street.
Make sure you sign on, too.
Lincoln, Nebraska. And I just appreciate you folks viewing this for me and hope we can get it through. Thank you.
And I'm assuming if we would go ahead and try to put restrictions on, you would be okay with restrictions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item? Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Okay. Next item, please.
All right. Next, I'll call items 12 and 13. They are the application of Texas T-Bone for a Class C liquor license at 200 North 70th Street, and the related manager application of Anthony Chamnus. Do you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Anthony B. Chamnus. I go by Bennett, my middle name, and I reside at 110 College Park Road, Apartment 92. And I'd like to open up a Texas T-Bone Steakhouse. I have a Texas T-Bone Steakhouse in Grand Island, Nebraska. I've operated there for 20 years. And opportunity came to expand to Lincoln. Over the years, lots of people from Lincoln have come and ate at my place, most recently more people from coming into Grand Island for the State Fair, you know, and have been extremely happy with it and keep saying we need to come to Grand Island. So when the opportunity arose, and the company that I'd worked for for 33 years, expanding Texas T-Bones in other states, changed their business plan, so I became a franchisee of a Texas T-Bone, first one being my one in Grand Island, which I'd ran for 20 years. This opportunity came here, so I took it and would like to run a successful and profitable business in Lincoln.
Okay. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chamnus. Are you going to, you still do the Grand Island one?
I do.
So you'll have two at this point, then?
Yes.
Will you be expanding more, then, if you have a franchise agreement?
You know, my growth plan now is to, like, in Grand Island, I had a young man that worked for me for 18 years. So I brought him in as a partner in that business and have turned that over to him so he can be a successful businessman in Grand Island. And my City Council meeting with that is tomorrow night in Grand Island. But here, I've also advertised and interviewed a owner-operator. You know, I didn't get one right off the bat, or else he would be standing here. So I had to get the process going, so I put it in my name and everything. But down the road, the expansion will be where I turn it over to him, and then if these individuals want to expand, then I will expand in that portion, or if another good deal comes along in another area, yeah, I would expand again. I'm trying to work towards retirement, where I don't have to work 16 hours a day inside the four walls of the building and just own a few and let other people work for me.
I'm sorry, Roy?
Do you have any plans on renovation of the property you're going to take over?
I've cleaned it up, painted, redone the floors, you know, and to make it, get ready for the inspections and that type of thing. The outside area needs a little bit of maintenance work, and I will do that as well. You know, it's an outside that was used for an outside bar area. I'm not that much into the bar business. Mainly alcohol is a complement. We sell less than 12% alcohol in our place. We don't market it as a bar or anything like that. Mainly, it's a waiting area and then for people that just want to come in and that type of thing. So, yeah, I mean, when you come in, I think you'll see a big difference. It's the former Lone Star Steakhouse building, and I believe it was Ace's House of Cuisine, you know, prior to that. So we've done a complete repaint and put it up to make it look like what we represent our Texas T-Bone to be.
I wish you every success.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here.
Semper Fi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jarhead?
You've got one jarhead up here.
All right.
Yes, we do. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next, I'll call items 14 and 15. They're the application of Hickory Road BBQ and Catering Company for a Class I liquor license at 5555 South 48th Street, Suite C, and the related manager application of Rochelle M. Schaaf. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Rochelle M. Schaaf, 1203 14th Street, Auburn, Nebraska.
Okay.
We have owned a restaurant in Auburn for 19 years, and kind of the same story where people have wanted us to expand, and we wanted to. We couldn't decide between Omaha and Lincoln and found the property.
And you made the right choice.
Yes, we did. And the property came up back in the fall, and so we're excited to be on the south side of town. We feel like there's more need for sit-down restaurants, family-friendly, kind of the same thing. We're less than 20% alcohol sales.
Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Let me rephrase that. You made half the right choice. You got us in Lincoln, wrong side of town, but it's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll help you.
All right.
We'll help you. I hope you can expand our side of town, too.
Okay.
Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Thank you. You want to tell us just a little bit about the restaurant?
We're mostly barbecue, but we also have chicken, steaks, hot wings. We sell a lot of wings in Auburn, but don't anticipate that quite so much. We have two sports bars in our parking lot, so the Garage and Cappy's, well, across the street, and they do a lot of wing business. We cater. We do rib fests. We have not done Lincoln. We won Cheyenne last year, and we were People's Choice in Wichita, so we want to still keep doing that.
Very good.
Yeah, we're excited to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next, I'll call items 16 and 17. They're the application of Born in a Barn for a Class I liquor license at 815 O Street, Suite 2, and the related manager application of Allison Pankost. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be? Thank you.
You're welcome to testify and sign afterwards, if you'd like.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Jesse Reese. I'm co-owner, operator of Born in a Barn. This is my manager, Allison Pankost. We currently operate a location in Laramie, Wyoming. My address is 2560 Laramie, Wyoming. We've been in operation for two years and had the opportunity to expand and found that Lincoln was definitely a great place for us. Allison is going to give you a little more information about us.
My name is Allison Pankost, 2603 Washington Street, here in Lincoln. We're burgers, wings, and beer. We pride ourselves on our local products. We're going to be getting local beef from Del Gould Meats, and we'll be getting fresh buns from Le Cartier Bakery. We have 21 different, unique, house-made wing sauces, fresh toppings, four different kinds of patties. We do beef, lamb, breakfast, and turkey. We have rotating weekly specials. All three of us, both the owners and myself, are from Nebraska, so we thought Lincoln was a great fit. Vinango Alliance and Gearing. We've got a young, energetic staff, local product, great service. We plan on having some student-based specials, continue to draw families and students down to the Haymarket area.
Okay. Questions? Okay. Thank you very much. You guys, everybody wins the award today for the most unique names of bars and companies, so I'll tell you that. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move these as each on its own. I had one of our colleagues ask for that, so I would first move items six and seven for approval.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And then I would move items eight and nine for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion, color roll.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move approval of items 10 and 11 with a one-year no violations restriction attached.
Second that.
The restriction is in the resolution.
Moved by Roy, seconded by Trent. Discussion?
Sorry, Madam Clerk, you said the restriction is already in there.
The restriction is already in there. No liquor violations for one year.
Discussion? I would say this is not unusual. This is something we've done in the past, and recently, in fact, with one of our own businesses. I would give you kudos because there is nothing on your record from 2010 on, so that shows that there is a thought that this will work, but this will give everybody an opportunity to have some breathing room. So I thank you for at least understanding why we want to do it. Color roll, please.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
I would move approval of items 12 and 13.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion, color roll.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And finally, I'd move approval of items 16 and 17.
Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion, color roll.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge?
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And finally, I'd move approval of items 16 and 17.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion?
I'd just like to compliment you. We do have some very unusual names on these applications and on the organizations behind them. Very ingenious.
Okay. Call or roll, please.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next would be our public hearing resolutions. Item 18 is accepting the report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of March 16th through the 31st, 2015.
Anybody who'd like to come forward with a claim? Next item, please.
Next, I'll call item 19, then approving a professional service agreement between the city and the State Department of Roads to provide construction engineering services for the South 56th Street, Shadow Pines to Old Cheney Road project.
Good afternoon. Chris Humphrey with Public Works and Utilities Engineering Services. And in front of you today is a contract to give the mayor the authority to sign for the construction services of South 56th Street between Shadow Pines Drive and Old Cheney, which will start road construction this coming Monday, April 20th. And I apologize, I did not have the actual contract amount in the fact sheet. I put the total project amount. The actual construction engineering services contract that you are taking action on today is in the total amount of $458,602.68, of which 80% of that will be funded by federal funds and then the 20% local match.
Thank you, Ms. Humphrey. Two things, if you would. Could you just perhaps reiterate the time schedule? I know there was an open house the other night, but just for the benefit of everybody in Lincoln, because this is a major thoroughfare.
On Monday, we will start construction, April 20th, and it'll be a total road closure at the Beale Slough. The Beale Slough is about a half a mile south of Old Cheney, a half mile north of Pine Lake Road, obviously. There'll still be access to local businesses, so Waltz Road, which is the street with the, like, the Trade Center West, and then there's other businesses on the west side, they will still have access from Old Cheney Road. There's also a small business park just south of Beale Slough, and then there's some, about three residents that would need access as well. They will have access from Pine Lake Road. The main item and the critical path for this whole project is basically the reconstruction of the structure at the Beale Slough. That'll start on Monday with demolition or preparation for the demolition. There's some utilities underneath the structure that will need to be relocated, and then they'll start the reconstruction of it and then obviously end up with the paving on top. And that will be completed. The substantial completion date will be November 14th of this year, and basically what that means is that we will have at least one lane open in each direction from Shadow Pine, or from basically Pine Lake Road north to Old Cheney. So, mid-November, as long as we have a decent weather season and we don't run into a lot of unforeseen conditions, we will have at least one lane open in each direction. And then the final wrap-up of the project will be until June 25th of 2016. And basically, what the work that we're planning on doing in 2016 is work like sidewalks, trail construction, median surfacing, seating sodding, final grading, items like that. If we have good weather, we're trying to get as much done as we can this year in order to not inconvenience residents, business owners, the traveling public, so, but that's our schedule.
Okay. And then my second question dealt with the finances in two parts. One, if you can just review for everybody what the anticipated overall cost is of this segment. And then, secondly, I've had a lot of people ask, what, when does a project qualify for federal 80% and when doesn't, and maybe you could go over that a little bit, please.
Well, we have a certain amount of, I guess, first of all, this project's about $9.3 million right now. That's total cost. About 80% of that is federally funded, and that's everything, including engineering, right-of-way acquisition, utilities, roadway construction, construction engineering. With the limited federal funds that we have, there's only certain types of projects that we put them on. I know we've also talked with you guys that when we do use federal funds, there's a different process that we need to use as well, and so we try to put those federal funds on our bigger projects because there's kind of a baseline of different items that we need to do in the course of just running a project. So, it just makes more sense that the bigger the project, it makes the use of those federal funds a little bit more economical, spread out above the project.
And I guess what they often ask is, gee, I've got my residential street out here, ABC Street, that's in bad shape. Why don't you use some of those federal funds on that? And so, again, if maybe explain, and perhaps Mr. Feigard can assist there, but just to help the general clerk, understand, you know, how we do complete this. There's a lot of costs in all of the infrastructure.
Well, there's only so much money and it doesn't go to all of the streets, certainly. But the STP funds really that we get from the federal government are really intended to be more for what I'd call the arterial collector streets, the main streets. City of Lincoln specifically has money earmarked, the wheel tax for non-artarial streets. We quite often call them residential, but they, and we use those funds to do those. And again, as Chris said, there are so many, I want to call it strings or requirements for using federal aid dollars, that on those major arterials where we can better predict and deal with environmental issues, public involvement, all of those, that's the place to put those. So, and every year, it is, it really is an exercise in taking all the dollars we have, local dollars, federal dollars, working with planning, long-range plan, land use, and trying to decide what's the best use of those for preventative maintenance, new construction, and repair and rehab, and then growth on the edge.
And I assume you'll have an update on the city's website as this progresses, so that people can also check that.
Correct. Yeah, if you go to the lincoln.ene.gov and just type in the keyword 56th, all one word, it'll take it up to the project's website, and we'll have updates on there as we go along through construction.
Thank you.
Roy?
Roger, just for clarity, for a lot of people who don't know, what does STP fund stand for?
Surface Transportation Plan and Funds. My apologies, I get too used to using the acronyms, but...
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item, please come forward. Next item, please.
All right. I'll call items 20 and 21 together. They're the application of the City of Lincoln Redevelopment Agreement Collegiate Housing Redevelopment Subproject between the city and NEUNL Holdings LLC relating to the redevelopment of property on private property generally located on the west half of Block 70, bounded by South 8th and South 9th Streets, M-2N Streets, and the adjacent rights of way in downtown Lincoln. And then we have the amending the fiscal year 2014-15 CIP to authorize and appropriate 2.6 million in TIF funds from the Collegiate Housing Redevelopment Subproject.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, the applicant of this case, I'm giving you a letter that if it could be passed out to the members of the council, I'd be grateful. Just so that you know, it comes from the Lincoln Haymarket Development Corporation, the group in that area who is responsible for a great deal of the energy among businesses. The operative paragraph is the second one. And third one, the board of the Lincoln Haymarket Development Corporation approves of this redevelopment agreement and CIP amendment with NEUNL Holdings LLC to support the redevelopment of the South Haymarket through the provision of additional on and off-street parking. We applaud the efforts of Urban Development and NEUNL Holdings to resolve this issue with the use of a redevelopment agreement and CIP amendment. The amendment is, I'm sorry, the agreement is before you today. You are familiar with the issues in a previous hearing. This is an agreement between the developer of a seven-story housing complex, 172 residential units, about 600 beds, projected valuation of $16 million of tax valuation. The cost of building would be significant, more well over $20 million. This is a project that has their own plan for a portion of their parking needs with a 300-stall parking lot located at First and O Streets and a shuttle service for its tenants, but it cannot meet all of its parking needs. Early on, after the first blush of exchange with the developer, in which they were giving us notice of their plans and letting us know what was up, and for which we were delighted to hear that they'd planned to come from Indiana here to Lincoln to build, it became clear that the parking basis upon which we normally rent parking stalls would be inadequate. It wouldn't meet what they needed and it wouldn't meet what their lender needed. We normally do month-to-month contracts. They are capable of being ended by either party at the end of 30 days. That's what we do with every other business except for one circumstance. We make long-term commitments that last not only in some cases the length of the TIF agreement, but the length of the building, when that is a redevelopment agreement and a project in which the resources that are generated are spent for public improvements and public enhancements. That is the only time we make the kind of commitment that this particular developer needed, wanted, and requested of us. It took us a while to get down to the fact that what we normally do with businesses that are doing this wouldn't be adequate, and so for that reason, we both agreed that it would be valuable to expand the city's resources, particularly available to this developer, but also to the other users in the Haymarket, a crowded area, the South Haymarket, a developing area. We showed you last time the three locations that we think service parking lots are appropriate. We would make immediate attempts to try to construct one of those as quickly as we possibly could in the Alter South area, an area that would be able to hold on to 450 stalls into the foreseeable future. We do have a surface parking lot at West Depot now, but that is an area that we would anticipate being at stake with the Block 4 RFP, which we are now responding to. We have claimants for that land, so that while we have a surface parking lot, it will go away when and if we say yes to one of the two claimants that want to use Block 4. So, we will have available to us over time, over the 15 years, a projected amount of $2.6 million. The most, the most usable way to put this money to work now would be to do an interloan transfer among some kind of long-held money for which we would have access inside the city resources and then repay with the revenue that we get from the TIF payments for the taxes on this project. That would be the, that would be the system that would allow us to move most quickly, and I would, I would think it's the one that would make the most sense. The developer's here. You may want to ask a second time, because they've answered it already, but you may want to ask a second time, is this a case in which you need this redevelopment agreement to complete the project in this blighted and substandard area? Does this project meet or make the project economically feasible for you? You will have received, I believe, an email contact from the developer's lawyer yet today that would recite that, but if you wanted an open session, I would commend that you ask that question of the developer or their lawyer. I will tell you that in their representations to us, the answer is yes. That without the kind of exchange that's being done here, the project is not economically feasible in this area, not unless the City of Lincoln will grant the kinds of rights that we only grant under a redevelopment agreement historically. Are there questions that I can answer for you? And I would close by reminding you that there is an amendment for the purposes of changing the name to an appropriate legal name that should be put into the document, and you'll find it, I think, in your notes from the clerk. Questions?
John?
Yes, Mr. Landis, thank you. I'd like to go back again to the uses of the 2.6 million for surface parking, and you recall before, asked a little bit about doing a parking garage. I see you have Mr. Mixdorf here, who's head of our parking garages, and you mentioned that Block 4 is currently has proposals on it, that it will be probably disappearing here in the near future, and the same could go for this, one portion of this 2.6 million. And it seems like we're moving pieces around a chessboard, and would it not make sense to take that 2.6 million along with the parking meter and other revenue and really build a long-term solution for the business here, the law office? In fact, it sounds like, I haven't seen the exact details, but that since there would be TIF involved, that this project would also have longstanding, long-term access to parking with the city.
Two answers, I think, councilman, to that question. First, this is the projected area in the downtown where we did our demand study 67 months ago. This is Centennial Mall. This is 18th Street. This is 13th Street. This is L Street, and this is N Street. Given the amount of demand that we have, that we know about from people who want to expand their parking, requests for more garage spaces, an analysis of on-street use and the like, that's the appropriate area for the next garage. That's what our demand study says. The second thing that I would say is, and by the way, this is, this is an area that has had need but has seen the Larson Building, the Lumberworks Building, and red, blue, and green all constructed elsewhere, but not here. The second thing that I'd say is that it takes a good, long time to build a garage. The normal timeline that you assume when you're doing garage planning is four years, from the beginning of the commitment to do it to the opening of the garage. Now, part of that is usually in site acquisition, and site acquisition is difficult. In fact, it'll be difficult in this area. It'll be difficult in downtown Lincoln. Downtown Lincoln property is more and more densely used because there has been more and more development. The idea of a soft block, as there was at where the Latitude Project is now going up, south of Gold's, the idea of an entire block with one landowner is, those are disappearing. I don't know of one that exists otherwise. So, it will become increasingly difficult, but if you could, even if you could subtract land acquisition and you had a spot, it would still take you between design and planning several years. So, if you're looking for responding to needs in the South Haymarket, you would have a relatively crying need between now and three years from now, when I think there's a location that has been relatively patient, and I think we would say, given the current state of demand, is more deserving. That would be our take on it. Might others disagree with us? Oh, they do pretty frequently, and we hear other points of view, but that is the rationale that we'd take into the project.
But I don't think you answered my question. I'm not disputing that this other area needs a garage. I think what I'm pointing out is long-term, why don't we plan for the long term rather than spend 6, 2.6 million here?
Sure.
You know, we're taking 1.845 million a year out of the parking meter fund, which left there going over this four-year period, would accumulate roughly $10 million or short, close to that. And so, we get a long-term need, and with the Gold's Gallery, the Latitude Project, and others, theirs, and the ideas of having more of the, south of the Viaduct, there, a lot of development. It just seems like with that four-year time horizon, that we ought to look longer term rather than a short-term fix.
About, this is a choice of values, and I understand that your value would be different than ours. We would take this thought. Number one, there is no quote "long-term solution." When you get to the long-term solution, let's for example, say the Larson Building and six floors of parking, that's not, that's not a long-term solution. It's filled up and they want more parking. Haymarket Garage was not a long-term solution. It filled up. Now, they want more parking. We are never at a long-term solution in the sense that we arrive at all the parking we need, if the town is growing. Now, if we are stasis, then you could probably have a long-term solution in the sense that you wouldn't be growing and have more needs. So, first, I would say that a garage has more intense need satisfaction than a surface parking lot, and towards that end, I'd agree. However, this is not a bad stage towards that end. Let us imagine that in a quick pursuit of being able to get JPA land, converting it to a surface parking lot, and turn it now into immediate parking, we would then gain control of that property. And that's property that unlike Block 4, is property that we would be able to control into the extended future. If you were to take a look at that property, and let's imagine, demand continues to grow, the best logical thing to do at that point is to turn, when that, when that growth is there, is to take the surface parking lot and go vertical. When you go from surface parking lot to vertical, you don't need all the space, which is why, at the location that would now be a surface parking lot, the city would be well-positioned to have an additional development and a garage next to it. That's what we did in the Larson Building. And by the way, that's what allows the Olson Associate Project to succeed in the Haymarket. That's what allowed the Canopy Lofts and the, and the new hotel to succeed because they were in effect on the same block with a Civic parking garage. Now, in that case, they were JPA. But that model would be part of a, I think, we'll use our phrase, long-term solution, having added my caveat. That would be a place in which you could achieve short-term parking needs that are immediate and position yourself to be in a much better position because of site acquisition needs that you would meet now for what would be a longer-standing, efficient use. And that would be ultimately the day in which a garage would be appropriate. And then at that time, I think you and I will get a bottle of champagne and smash it on the front door of a parking garage that will be seven stories high, perhaps, on that location.
I, I'm sorry, I just don't feel you're addressing my question there. That it seems to take 2.6 million and move some curbs back and maybe get this surface lot, when it's just not a long-term solution. I feel like we're not expanding that 2.6 million as efficiently and effectively as an investment. an investment.
Gosh, I haven't persuaded you, I get that.
But it's not matter persuaded.
But I will tell you that we have a reason for doing what we're doing, consistent with what we think are the appropriate goals of the parking system and to respond to need. And that there are a multitude of issues, I think, here. Would say, I'm delighted to have the Haymarket Development Corporation saying, "Let's do this, let's go forward." We need on-street and off-street parking. So, there is a division. We're not alike in this, but we have reflected on what I think our responsibilities are and know that we have critics for the conclusions that we reach.
Carl?
Thank you. Mr. Landis, okay, I'm gonna try to follow up with what Mr. Camp was asking about. So, as I understand it, parking is a part of what we're looking at using these funds for. But I'm going back to the vision of the South Haymarket that was presented by the Planning Department about a year ago. And to go from where we are now to there takes a whole lot of things. It takes different street alignments, it takes sidewalks, it takes planting trees and all these things. So, are all of those things, or some of those things, part of what's envisioned here for?
What we recite here are sidewalks, streets, and parking facilities. We recite those three things with respect to this project and these resources. If you were to move a curb, you'd destroy a sidewalk, you'd have to replace it. We could use this to do what you would normally do on a pedestrian walkway, to make it more pedestrian-friendly, but to achieve that South Haymarket plan, and you will recall the Planning Department came up and said that this agreement is consistent with that plan, you would need more projects, more growth, and more resources. That plan is more ambitious than what we can achieve here. However, so, we're not going to build a park with this. We will do the pedestrian experience when we move the curb so that we can get angled parking as well as, you know, in the location, but when we do that sidewalk, because we will have to do that sidewalk, we'll do it in an appropriate way, and hopefully that will move us forward as a pedestrian experience. But we're talking sidewalks and curbs, roads, and public enhancements and the public parking facilities.
Thank you. Trent?
So, we've seen a number of these projects come forward in the past couple of years. With the completion of this project and some of the others we have approved, how many beds have we added in this downtown area?
We're probably getting close to 2,000, off the top of my head, and it may be more. I'm just doing a really rough math in my head.
That's pretty significant, though.
It is significant, and we've added them on Eighteenth and P Street, we've added them at the Rapp Building, we're going to add them at Latitude. Each one of those is like 400 or 500 beds, and this one is 600. The goal in the downtown plan, the last one, was for 3,000 housing units in downtown. And look at how close we are to achieving what was a long-term, multi-year, multi-decade plan. And there it is.
And I see kind of a change happening in Lincoln as far as, we see the private sector coming in to build these, whereas 10, 15 years ago, we would have seen the university constructing these on their own, and instead, you see the university doing really quite forward-thinking things like building an engineering college, building a business college, instead of expending those dollars to pay for more dorms.
I asked a university representative about what the last dormitory cost them to build. It was a high-rise. It was big. Cost $80 million. This is a privately-financed operation, not to meet university housing specifically. You're not going to call up the university and say, "I'd like to have housing." They say, "Well, here's the name of the Latitude," or, you know, the Rapp Building. But the market will be looking for these, and it seems to be a highly-marketable element. We are not alone in this. College towns like us are making the same transition.
I hear it from a bunch of other developers that they're looking at other college towns and building there because, well, money's cheap right now, and, you know, there's the capacity there where universities just aren't building their own dorms. I also want to follow up on John's question. With the surface parking lots, that would seem to give you a lot more flexibility and development later on down the road rather than building, you know, a seven-story garage that that's a permanent fixture for, until time ceases, it would imagine to me. But I didn't say that. But I, and I don't know if this is a question better for the developer, but I've seen the developer had some concern whether those parking spots were actually going to be filled by students' cars, that this is something that their lender is requesting them to go out and do in order to complete the project, but they don't, they're not expecting all these spots to be taken up by students in their vehicles because it's a pedestrian downtown area, there's bike accessibility, so, and we're not requiring them to do any parking.
That's right.
So, that leaves us with a degree of flexibility here where, you know, we could get a bunch of monthly parking leases later on and build a garage if that was what was demanded, right? I mean, there's a market force there.
We will, yes, we want to be, we want to be careful as to where the market is. It's not, some people build garages on the theory of the field of dreams. Build it and they will come. On occasion, they guess right, and it does create development close to it. And on occasion, they guess wrong, and they spent scores of millions of dollars for a near-empty garage that is an eyesore and a drain on civic resources. Our approach has been to do something like this, in which you do the best to analyze the existing demand. At the moment, we haven't taken the projection of, let's see if we can build it in a place where we hope there will be demand in time. Maybe someday we will, but that's not been our strategy up until now, and it's not the strategy we expect to do in the next move.
So, say, you come back, you could come back here under this redevelopment agreement and say, "Hey, we need a garage down here because there's just that much demand from, there's just that much demand from this project," and come back and amend this redevelopment agreement to do a garage.
The language of this is parking facilities. A surface parking lot is a facility, a garage is a facility. But rather than try to use that ambiguity in some way of trying to please everyone, knowing that there are different preferences, I would tell you what I think our projected plan would be, because the fastest way to get expanded resources is, in fact, a surface parking lot. Surface parking lots eventually become, they're the kinds of things that you do at the edge of a growth area where the land is cheaper, and when you're in the core of the area, you build up. That's what cities do if they're healthy, they grow up. And that's how you get dense use of land, big valuations, and the proximity of the urban experience.
Larry.
I'm glad Trent raised that point about allowing for future investment, because I think that's what you've been trying to say, is that the surface area lot can be, we can wait until we have another potential project that will yield further investment in downtown and allow for a higher and better use of that site. How much does it cost to build a five-story, seven-story garage?
Quality makes a difference, meaning, design quality. There are garages that are built for $14,000 a stall, and there are garages that are $20,000 a stall. If you were to probably look at the most efficient garage we have, you'd probably be looking at the big one right south of the Energy Square or one of those along there, and you'll know what they look like. They look like this over and over again. They have no active edges on the first floor. They are cheap, they're efficient monetarily, but they're at a cost of the urban experience if you were to compare that with others. If you want a really cheap downtown garage by comparison, you take a look at the State Garage, south of the Pershing Auditorium. And as efficient as that might be for parking purposes, it does have a residual cost to the development of the community. When we're looking at whether Pershing is highly-marketable, one of the things people will tell you is, what are the blocks around it? And one of the most, one of the least walkable blocks is the Federal Garage to the north and the State Garage to the south. No doors, no windows, no eyes on the street, no activity. There are places where pedestrians stop, turn around, and get their car. And so, you can have a, you can have a cheaper garage and you can have a more expensive garage. But that might be a, you know, a range. And by the way, I've got to figure that the costs are going up. There are garages that are over $20,000 a stall, they certainly have occurred. The more you can build at one location, the more efficient it is. A 400-stall garage would likely be an expensive garage compared to an 800 or a 1,000-stall garage. So, those are all factors that go into garage.
Okay, well, to follow up more on Councilman Camp's question about why we wouldn't use this to build a garage, let's say you were ready to build a garage. Your study that you've undertaken in cooperation with downtown businesses has suggested to you that this particular area that you outlined from Thirteenth to Eighteenth and L to N is the priority for downtown businesses to serve and meet demand, and for businesses that have been waiting for that area to be met. So, even if you had a lump sum ready to go to build a garage, would you build it in this area of Haymarket?
No. We'd build it here.
Can you point again, because we didn't?
That would have been right in the middle of Larry's nose, I think. You're gonna have to wait for it to come up so we can actually see. There you go, thank you.
Let me recite it again.
Thank you.
We got my reading glasses and recite it again. L, N, Eighteenth, Thirteenth.
And that study tells us that the efficient use of public dollars for another parking garage needs to be prior, that that's a priority area.
In our ability to guess where, if we built a garage, we'd have the most immediate use because there's demand, is there.
Any other questions?
Could we have Mr. Mixdorf come up? We'll let you introduce yourself.
Wayne Mixdorf, parking manager for the city.
Parking czar. Thank you. I'd just like to follow up a little bit. And I'm not sure, well, my point is I don't disagree at all with Mr. Landis on this other need. I think it's definitely there. I think we have kind of a current need that we need to be thinking a little bit more as far as parking facilities. And with that, if you look at the city garages downtown, how many are full right now?
If we could go back to the overhead for a moment. The, if you look at the red on here, these are keyed as functionally-full garages. Now, what we're looking at here is University, Larson, Center Park. This would be the Q Place Garage. This is the Haymarket Garage. This is the Lumberworks Garage. But these four in particular are considered to be functionally-full. Now, the definition of that in the industry is that it achieves 85%, excuse me, 85% occupancy and stays at that level or greater over time during the day. These garages achieve 85% full or greater, nine o'clock in the morning, they stay that way until after four o'clock in the afternoon. So, clearly, that's our business community, our downtown business community that are using those garages. So, right now, we have a waiting list that is now over 700, that are people waiting to get into the city garages. And 200 of those approximately are internal customers, the other 500 are external customers that are parking elsewhere and looking for that opportunity.
With the, and we have great organizations like NelNet, Huddle, and others that have just brought an influx. We've got the Latitude Project, and I forgot how many beds that will be, but 400, 500. We've got this new project here with 700 or 600, excuse me. And looking at emerging needs, is it reasonable to say there's a significant need for both that big blue area and also maybe more around 10th and N Street?
In my personal opinion, well, let's go back to the first thing, the demand study that we've done internally. Our research shows that we need to have a parking garage that completes the southeast section of downtown, if you will, and that will help us bleed off the demand from these garages that are already considered to be full, as well as prevent Cornhusker and Carriage from getting to that status. So, that's the, that's the critical area, in my opinion. From a personal opinion standpoint, as I look to the future and try to figure out what I'm going to do between now and retirement, we're looking at, yes, at some point in the future, I do envision that we're going to need a parking structure in South Haymarket. I don't think that that's out of the question. At what point in the future, that's not something I can predict at this point. We also probably are going to need another parking structure farther to the east at some point. Again, that's not, I have no idea what the timing would be that's predicted by demand, but that demand is already starting to grow. When the Pershing block is developed at some point in the future, I fully expect that that will promote greater growth to the east of downtown, and that will have to be supported with structured parking.
And I think the reasonable conclusion is there's a lot of current demand, and there's a lot of just kind of a slow tsunami of other demand coming, it would seem like. And I'm just trying to see if you've got $2.6 million, does it make more sense to take that and maybe give you back some of the Parking Meter revenues that we take each year so you can get some land bank, you can start on this process? Mr. Landis said it's a four-year process. It just seems like some prudent planning would be to look at two facilities, you know, and probably three. I mean, there's just going to keep coming, and when you get all those beds and everything, and if we're just doing it for a short-term period...
Well, I do, I do agree with you. I mean, I do agree that there is a growing demand, and I don't expect that that demand is going to, going to abate anytime, anytime soon. I think that if you look at the timing of this wave of growth, it is on the heels of the economic downturn. Once the recovery began and money became available again, the development started almost right away. As long as the economy continues to grow, I think that we're going to see this, this demand met, this development is going to continue, and that's just going to increase the demand for parking. But back to your point about the, about the money, the prudent planning, I agree with you, the prudent planning is absolutely necessary. However, right now, in our current structure, we are not generating enough revenue to be able to create the type of fund, excess revenue, to create the type of fund that you're describing. We have other demands on the revenue. Most importantly, any excess revenue that I would be generating today, that Parking Services would be generating, I would be plowing back into maintenance of the existing facilities. We have a couple of aging facilities that are looking at, we're looking at spending upwards of a million dollars in each one of those facilities. Center Park elevators are to be renovated. That estimation right now is about $800,000 for that project. We're just in the very beginning stages of designing that. Soon as we finish that, our University Square elevators will need to be renovated at approximately the same cost. So, there's a tremendous demand for the... So, there's a tremendous demand for the, for whatever excess revenue that we are generating, which does handicap us a little bit as we try to do the future planning for, for our structures.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item, please come forward. First, those four, and then those not-so-much-four.
Travis Vensel, Vice President of Development with Trinitas. I was here a couple of weeks ago, and we talked about the redevelopment agreement, the redevelopment plan. Again, I won't spend a lot of time recapping the project. I think you know about it, and if you want to ask questions, I'm happy to answer that. But it's about 172 units, about 625 beds. We specifically designed this project for the South Haymark District. We like Lincoln, we've come here and we've designed something that meets within the city's zoning ordinance. We're not asking for any waivers or variances to our project. We design, by design, student projects across the country. They're fully amenitized or furnished units geared to the 18- to 26-year-old. We have a lot of special things in our property with, including like a shuttle service to campus, a fitness center and the like. We expect that this project will be very successful and add to the Haymarket District. We're excited about it. We look forward to working with the city, with the council, as we move forward on this project. With that, I'm not going to spend a lot more time describing the project other than to say that we asked for your support tonight and happy to answer any questions.
Questions? John?
Thank you, Mr. Vensel. And you've heard some of the questions and conversation we've had here. In your project with 625 beds, you're building for the long term on seven stories and so Do you like an idea of having this 2.6 million funneled more into a long-term solution rather than perhaps a checkerboard that gets moved around or? I'm trying to understand, because I've heard a lot of people say it's parking, 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 not so much location. And in fact, I had lunch with some people the other day, and they said, you know, downtown, this is, well, Mr. Mixdorf mentioned, got this 500, 700-person waiting list.
I think it's a little bit of a combination of both. I think as a company, we believe that long-term, and I don't know how we define long-term, but long-term, the parking demand for urban living in Lincoln will not be what it is today. I think that use of public transportation, a walkable city, will be very different in the future than it is today. But today, we have a market, we have lenders and equity investors that say, the projects that are out in the suburbs, the projects that are two miles from town where you can't walk, everybody can park their car at their front door. So if we're going to lend and we're going to do this project, we need to be able to park similarly to that, if that's a word, similarly, in a similar manner.
Well, let me dictionary again. I think you've got it, though.
Well, we wanting to park in a sim, we want our residents to be able to park in a similar manner. So that's where we're looking at a variety of options for parking. Would I love to have a parking structure across the street? I'd love to, but my $2 million will only support about 200 parking spots. And we all know that a parking structure would be much more efficient if it was more in the neighborhood of 600 or 700 parking spots. And not, not 200 spots underneath my building that are now only for my residents, but one that could be used for a variety of things as we build to the future. That's a more appropriate way to use those funds. So, is it a surface parking lot today? That may be the best answer to get us through this gap from where we are today to where we think we will be in the future, which is a 600 or 700 parking stall garage that can be used in a variety of manners as those needs change over the future. Does that answer your question?
I'm just looking at 200 stalls and a 2.6 million, that's 13,000 stall. And I'm just trying to help you in the long term and just knowing, seeing what I've seen in the evolution. I know Mr. Seacrest, both being a lawyer and a planner by background, I think can understand some of that. And just trying to get that longer-term vision so that we use our money and our resources that are limited as best we can.
And I greatly appreciate that. I think the very first strategy in the cheapest park, public parking, is you're on street. So anytime you can go from parallel to angle, that is going to get your biggest bang for your buck. And that's what this redevelopment agreement allows as well. It's interesting, when that map was up and we were looking at all the city garages, I think everyone came out of a surface parking lot or had a big chunk of it that was a surface parking lot. So that's been the evolution. You know, I'd love to have more parking. We all would, but we also got to be sure that the market shows up because at 14 or $20,000 a stall, you can't make a mistake and move it around. And so I think this, they're being prudent, but your point of putting us all on guard to try to figure out the next couple of garages is a very prudent one and one that we should focus on.
Right. So, the businessman in me is hearing something, and you tell me if I'm hearing it right. What I'm hearing is you can't build a parking garage now that you can't cash flow now. Is that right?
As a general rule, in downtown parking garages, the cash flow, what you and I call the users, the monthly and the daily users, you take that income stream and bring it back to present value, only pays for half of the cost of a stall. We have to find other techniques like tax increment financing or JPA when we did that project to fund the other half of parking. And so that's, it's that second half is so hard to find. And that's why we generally need to see the development show up and capture their TIF or be able to be confident that it's a good resource to direct parking funds that direction.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item, please come forward.
I didn't know if you wanted any but-for analysis or not. I sent you an email
Offered.
Earlier this afternoon, trying to explain how I feel we're clearly, clearly meeting the but-for and how some recent newspaper state articles have misconstrued some matters. And I, this isn't even close, in my mind, that we do meet the statutory but-for. And I could explain in more detail if you want. Otherwise, if questions arise, I can come back up.
Go ahead, Kent, if you'd like.
I think part of the confusion is what I call the redeveloper-led TIF process. And that's the one, the traditional one that we use all the time. It's, when I mean redeveloper-led, the redeveloper asks for the TIF, and the TIF goes into public improvements in and around their project that really directly benefits. And the redeveloper-led means they have to go build, they have to build those improvements through the executive order process, and they have to go buy and fund the TIF bonds, and they get to enjoy the benefits, but so does the public. But they have to follow the procurement process of the city. That's the traditional way. What has happened here is we are doing a new technique, which I'm going to call city-led, where we're keeping the redeveloper out of the business of doing the TIF procurement, the TIF design, the TIF bidding, the TIF construction, and having to do the TIF financing. I don't know if you noticed it, but this redevelopment agreement's missing 20 pages because it's using the second technique by having the city do the TIF and now TIF process rather than the redeveloper. By doing that, it looks like we're not needing TIF. But we do. The difference is, instead of the money coming directly through the TIF-first technique, we're getting a commitment by this, asking for a commitment from the city to allow us to rent at market rate 200 parking stalls. Well, the city has those stalls, so the TIF doesn't have to go directly to fund the existing stalls. But in order for the city to feel comfortable to make a long-term commitment to us for 200 stalls, which is imperative for our equity investors and our banker, the city feels more comfortable making that long-term commitment, knowing that they can use the TIF for surface, on-street, things that do provide parking, that directly allows the city to feel more comfortable making the commitment for 200 stalls to us along the way. So it's a different technique, and as a result, it makes it look like we're not directly needing the TIF because the TIF isn't going directly to us like it does traditionally. We're not the ones building things. We're not the one procuring and bidding. We're not the one having to buy the bonds. So it's a different technique, but the bottom line is the but-for test. And the but-for, here's the, the real challenge here, is whenever you do a project downtown, and I think John can lead the example for us because he's done so much in the Haymarket area, you have higher costs of assembling the site and the buildings. You have the higher costs of demolition of outdated buildings. You have to abate environmental issues a lot of times. You have to fund utility and alley improvements. You have to help do streetscapes. You have higher costs to meet the downtown design standards now, and we have higher costs to hit multimodal transportation solutions as well as parking needs. Well, all the other housing students, projects have stood in front of you and been able to say, but for TIF, they could not make their project go. Ours, you got to take one more step in that, but for the city's commitment to allow us 200 stalls, we could not make our project go. And the way the city can make their commitment to those 200 stalls is by having the TIF to do what I call the replacement parking that they will eventually put into place that allows them to feel comfortable to make this long-term commitment. There's also two parts to the but-for test, and I'm not going to bore you with that unless you really, really want to know. But the second part's, I think, equally important in that this extra parking allows the South Haymarket area to go and continue the trend and policy of this council and former councils to not require parking in the downtown area. Well, why, what you're able to do is by that policy is with this 2.6 million dollars, you are starting parking in the South Haymarket area. You are starting to provide it so that when development does start to show up, they will not, they will have a head start in providing parking, even though the statute and the ordinance does not require that parking to be built along the way. You, by doing the streetscape and the parking, will encourage South Haymarket development to occur much more than without it. And with the extra development opportunities, we will see projects, we will see neighbors' projects come onboard so that there will be more eyes on the street, more shoppers, more residences, more office workers. The more eyes on the street make our project safer and makes the South Haymarket area safer, which then feeds more development. So there's a lot of direct and indirect ways to look at the but-for test, but in every instance that I've looked, we meet the but-for tests, the two but-for tests that are in the statute, both directly and through what I call the redevelopment area or the community development area of eyes on the street. We also, by doing the but-for, the analysis and the way we've done this, is we're doing a multimodal approach. We're doing some of our own parking out on West O, we're doing a shuttle. That's allowed because you're helping us get the commitment for the parking. So again, those are what I call public benefits that help make our project viable, and more importantly, probably in the long run, it brings neighbors. The more neighbors we have next to us, the more long-term viable our project is. We're gambling that we're going to have new neighbors to be sure we have the eyes on the street. And with that, I'm glad to answer any questions.
Kent, this is a new direction, but is it still in, is it still in spirit of what TIF was supposed to be about?
Oh, there's no doubt. I mean, community development, it's a, the law has always allowed this technique. And in some instances, I, I oversimplified it when I said developer-led is the first technique. There's times the city has split the TIF. The developer leads on a lot of it, and then the city has preserved parts, sometimes 25%, and they do the lead. What this is unique is that we're not doing the split anymore. The city's doing the 100% lead on this one. But we've done the mix, and if the city can take the lead in a mix where the city does some and the developer does some, and that's lawful, then it's city doing it all is lawful too, in my opinion. And more importantly, you can rely on your own city attorney's opinion, which I think they feel comfortable as well.
Thank you very much. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item, please come forward.
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government. I would like to speak to the use of TIF for this project. The Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government has used the Freedom of Information Act to gain access to the Department of Urban Development records regarding the use of TIF. Yesterday, in the LJS, Lincoln Journal Star paper, Jim Froman wrote a letter concerning the city's not following its own policy about the use of the TIF, and which falls under the state law. We are in agreement with Mr. Froman's points. The city council has never asked for proof of any issues concerning the but-for test being met. We ask that public hearings, that you not approve this project until Mr. Landis presents the documents to you showing some kind of advertising for development proposals that have never been, that might have gotten other developers, or some financial statement from this project that it cannot be accomplished without thousands of cities' taxpayers' money. Also, legal proof that no TIF extractions were demanded from the project to pass. One of the things that this gentleman who's in charge of this project or representing the company noted is that in the future, the trend is parking spaces may not be needed. The demographics and the trends in the United States do not bear out the need for 2,000 beds or even 3,000 beds. For the first time in U.S. history, there are more people over the age of 60 than there are under the age of 16, which means that our population is growing older and older and that their needs will be preempted by the needs of young people if they have the power to vote, which they do. Education will not be on a campus, but it'll be online by universities or by educational Now, Mr. Seacrest said that parking garages only recover half of the cost of parking. Therefore, this project seems dependent upon the TIF, if you use his argument for having that done.
I think so.
It strains the rationale of the Watch Dogs and other people that a multimillion-dollar company can't afford to build these parking spaces if they want it, rather than using the TIF to provide its financing for that. The, originally last week, the company stated it had all of these projects over many cities. And so I'm sure that they have a balance sheet, well in the millions, if not in the billions. So we ask you not to approve this project until you have more facts about why the TIF is needed and also more justification from the Department of Urban Development.
Questions? Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item, please come forward. Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right. Public hearing ordinance, the second reading, there are none, so that would conclude our public hearing. We can move into the voting session.
Before we do, I should say that Troop 22 has Before we do, I should say that Troop 22 has, Boy Scouts has a young man who's getting a badge, and he's set through this and his eyes are not totally glazed over, so I'm very proud of you. Thank you for coming. Go ahead.
All right. Public hearing resolutions. Item 18 is the report of new impending claims against the city for the period of March 16th through the 31st, 2015, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
Second.
Second by Roy. Discussion. Call or roll?
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 19 is the professional service agreement between the city and the State Department of Roads to provide construction engineering services for the South 56th Street Shadow Pines to Old Cheney Road project, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Trent. Discussion. Call or roll?
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Discussion on the main motion. But I would only say that, like some, I struggle with the amount of new student housing that continues to come in. But at the end of the day, it's not the job of the city council to decide whether that's good business or bad business. That's really the discussion of the people who develop in the bank. And I think you should be, or people should be bolstered by the fact that the last two projects that come in were not local people. Those were people who do this all over the United States and have come here to do it. And so clearly, they believe there's the demand, and since that's their business, I'm not sure it's the business of any city council to say you don't have a right to do your business here. So I intend to support. Call or roll, please.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Next would be item 21, then, amending the fiscal year 2014-15 CIP to authorize and appropriate $2.6 million in TIF funds for the collegiate housing redevelopment subproject, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Before we, Rick, do we need?
Do we have a motion to amend on this one as well?
Motion to amend again?
I don't believe in motion amends needed on this one. The name of the redevelopers not part of that.
Very good. Roy.
I'd just like to say on this, I've struggled with this thing. And the reason I'm struggling, have been struggling with it, I've worked through the TIF stuff in my mind, but the fact of the matter is, here we are, and we find that because we have been funding the general fund with the parking fund, now we have to fund parking with TIF. I really dislike that, and I want to just let people know that I'll be bringing this up again when it's time to have a budget, because that budget impacts this. I don't think we would have to have TIF at all if we had all the parking fund money intact in the parking fund. We could spend on this right now. But I, but I think this project is so important and that parking drives development downtown in a synergistic way. Development can't take place without parking, and so I will support this.
When you end it, John?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the comments. My colleague just made those. They're on a different vein, but we do need to keep the Parking Enterprise Fund whole. We're currently shifting $1.845,000 per year from that, which is basically all but $150,000 of the parking meter revenue into the city's general fund, and that is a Parking Enterprise Fund, and that would really help in projects like this. I think it was evident with the questions I asked. I'm troubled because parking is very critical, and I want to see this project succeed as others. And it's just critical that we do long-term solutions. And on-street parking is not long-term parking. That's for transient visitors and so forth. Taking the money to shift curbs, redo sidewalks, it's redo. And we have so many, so few resources now that I think it's so important that we efficiently spend them. And so what I'm wrestling with here is, is almost saying I'll vote against it just from the principle that this $2.6 million needs to go to a long-term solution. It's not short-term, because you just don't get a pool of $2.6 million come available every day. I'm just really wrestling with that, that we just need to do that for long-term, and I don't think this is long-term thinking.
Carl. Thank you. You know, parking is, is an important issue in downtown Lincoln. It's going to be an important issue in the development of the South Haymarket. And this project looks at parking in a lot of different ways. There is parking that will be provided most immediately on the street. There's, there will be parking spaces provided in existing city garages. And they're also having a satellite lot that will serve students that don't need to have their cars every day. And it seems to me that that, that is a reasonable approach. Plus, the plan that is envisioned here is a great jumpstart to the South Haymarket development that is going to be an important future development for residences and businesses in our community, so I'm supportive.
Any other remarks? Call or roll, please.
Camp.
No.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 23 is the contract with Lincoln Haymarket Development Corporation for the Farmers Market, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second by Roy. Discussion. Call or roll?
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 23 is the contract with Lincoln Haymarket Development Corporation for the Farmers Market, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second by Larryn. Discussion. Call or roll?
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 24, Comp Plan Conformance 15003, declaring approximately 6,668 square feet of property generally located at North 12th and Y Street as surplus, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second by Carl. Discussion. Call or roll?
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Carried six to one. No public hearing second, ordinance is second reading. Ordinance is third reading. Item 22, accepting and approving an amendment to the lease agreement between the city on behalf of the Health Department and Enterprise Company to lease additional space at the current 27th and Cornhusker Highway WIC clinic and extend the term of the lease until October 31st, 2018, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second by Roy. Discussion. Call or roll?
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 23 is the contract with Lincoln Haymarket Development Corporation for the Farmers Market, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second by Larryn. Discussion. Call or roll?
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 24, Comp Plan Conformance 15003, declaring approximately 6,668 square feet of property generally located at North 12th and Y Street as surplus, introduced by Fellers.
So moved. Second.
Second by Roy. Discussion. Call or roll?
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 26, approving a real estate sales agreement between the city and 1100 Y LLC, authorizing the sale of city-owned surplus property generally located on the east side of North 12th Street between Y and Charleston Streets, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second by Roy. Discussion. Call or roll?
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 24, Comp Plan Conformance 15003, declaring approximately 6,668 square feet of property generally located at North 12th and Y Street as surplus, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second by Carl. Discussion. Call or roll?
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 25, Change of Zone 15006, application of 1100 Y LLC for a change of zone from P Public Use to R8 Residential on property generally located at North 12th and Y Street, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Carl. Discussion. At the end of the day, I think this is a great project because it takes a little piece of sliver of ground that we cannot use now and puts it on the tax rolls. Call or roll, please.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 26, approving a real estate sales agreement between the city and 1100 Y LLC, authorizing the sale of city-owned surplus property generally located on the east side of North 12th Street between Y and Charleston Streets, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second. Second by Carl. Discussion. Call or roll?
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 27, Annexation 15003, amending the Lincoln Corporate Limits map by annexing approximately 59.72 acres of property generally located at South 84th and Van Dorn Street, introduced by Fellers.
So moved. Second.
Second by Roy. Discussion. Call or roll?
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 28, Change of Zone 15005, application of FT Development 2, Inc., for a change of zone from AGR Agricultural to R1 Residential, from AGR Agricultural Residential to O3 Office Park, and from O3 Office Park to R1 Residential on property generally located at South 84th and Van Dorn, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second by Roy. Discussion. Call or roll?
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 29, Use Permit 15005, application of FT Development 2, Inc., for a use permit to allow an office park having approximately 225,000 square feet of office floor area that could alternately be developed as a 150-unit apartment complex with a waiver to setbacks on property generally located at South 84th and Van Dorn Streets, introduced by Fellers.
So moved. Second.
Second by Roy. Discussion. Call or roll?
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 30, approving an amendment to the annexation agreement between the city and FT Development 2, Inc., regarding cost responsibilities for municipal services associated with the annexation, maintenance responsibilities, and other appropriate matters related to the development of land within the previously approved Fire Thorns CUP on property generally located at Van Dorn Street from 84th to 91st Street, introduced by Fellers.
So moved. Second.
Second by John. Discussion. Call or roll?
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 31, amending Chapter 4.66 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to redesignate the city audit advisory board as the city performance audit committee by revising and deleting current definitions, establishing said committee and its membership, providing for the members' terms of service and conditions for removal from office, defining the duties and powers of the committee, providing that the committee meet regularly on at least a quarterly basis, and replacing references to board with committee, introduced by Fellers.
So moved. Second.
Second by John. Discussion.
I'd also move to amend with motion amend number one, which eliminates the restriction on type of annual audit to be conducted by the committee to performance audit. Basically allows it to do a financial audit as well.
Second. Seconded by John. Discussion. Call or roll?
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
I just appreciate the council and Jeff Kerpatrick and the mayor's office working with me on this. I think it's been a good team effort and appreciate the support.
Thank you. And I want to thank Trent for bringing this. Having the ability to do an audit is something we've had, but it hasn't been happening very often. So I think this helps to make sure that those things that certainly do need attention will get that attention. I guess the one thing that I want to make sure that doesn't happen is that this becomes a political football to get kicked around and that we keep this as I think is intended. Thank you.
John.
Jonathan. Well, I want to thank Trent, too, for his work on this and his efforts with the mayor's office and his colleagues to refine this. And so I'll be interested in seeing how things work out in upcoming years, but thank you, Trent.
I would guess that this probably has been revised about as many times as anything we've had, and I think that's a good thing. My thanks to law and to everybody who took any part of this. And in fact, Trent even made a correction or a change today that was based on what we heard last week in public hearing. And I think that's a huge plus and says that there is a reason that people come and testify. And at the end of the day, this takes what essentially was a rowboat that the city had with no oars and puts the oars. Now, the question is, can we get everybody pulling the oars the same direction? And that is, that will be the test of, not myself, because I will be gone, but that will be the test of future councils to make sure that some of the concerns about how this could be played politically just simply don't happen. Call or roll, please.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Resolutions on first reading is just one item, number 32. Ordinance's first reading and related resolutions are items 33 through 38. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda may do so at this time. You are invited to a paradise on earth. There are some corrections. A Nebraska bill 625 that went to a hearing March 12th, if passed, allows involuntary mentally ill to be moved to another state. Soviet senators and Soviets in health and human services state there will be a lot more insane citizens. And there aren't enough beds in this state. The truth is Hastings is adding 100 more beds. The truth is it's easier to rent a house in every county for mentally ill. Castor County has Belmont House, a success for mentally ill residing here. In 1990 and before, no police were allowed to gather insane persons. By 2010, every state's Soviet police have gathered even sane citizens and put them in psych facilities. There's no need for police to gather anyone to go to a psych unit. If a citizen harms themselves, then an ambulance personnel sends them to a psych unit. If a citizen harms another person, police take them to jail. If they cannot care for themselves, then a relative cares for them, and they volunteer to go to a local home. The National Missing Persons Bureau quit over five years ago. This means the feds are not Americans. Soviet senators bill 625, if passed, allows our citizens to become missing persons sent to another state. Every new civic official, if white, is a Soviet or gay. Shisandra and Miragold are examples of plants that cause psychedelic schizophrenia. Look clay or dirt for any detox drug or disease. Either lithium or dimethylsoxide taken 40 days ends every mental illness if we have those drugs without additives. You saw the movie, A Beautiful Mind documentary, where in 1950, John Nash was looking for Soviets. Timothy Leary gave him LSD in his refrigerator food. Then John Nash was taken to a psych facility where he said the psychiatrist was a Soviet. This is a true story. The end of The Awakenings movie with Robin Williams curing over 100 mute neurological patients, Dr. Oliver Sacks, the author, said he lost his job to a Soviet psychiatrist who denied DOPA to the mute patients thereafter. Wear rosary for the best influences.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak, please come forward. Come right on up. Mr. Austin?
Yeah, thank you. Well, ladies and gentlemen of this body, I come to you today...
Mr. Austin, you have to introduce yourself, please. Yeah, you'll get it, but you have to introduce yourself, sir.
Okay, I've got something very serious. It's on North 27th Street.
Wait a minute. Before you start, you have to tell everybody who you are.
Oh, this body. For you people who don't recognize me, on this television, I come on as Johnny Cash, Austin, A-U-S-T-I-N.
Now, your five minutes starts.
Ladies and gentlemen, today I come with a very serious thing. This is on North 27th. And due to the help of a bus driver, I'm here today. I might not have been. On North 27th, y'all know where the Golden Trail is? Well, I tell you, I want each of you to drive by there and stop and look. There's a ditch there. I say it's elephant grass they planted in there. And when it was raining, I tried to cross this ditch, and I couldn't make it. A lurk bus driver seen that I wasn't coming out of the ditch, so he come down and got me out. Now, this is a health hazard if I ever seen one. You know, the foot, the shoes on the other foot now, because I don't have no health hazards anymore. I've been accused of it, but I don't have any. I want each of you, look at that thing. And I'm not going to let this thing die. I'll be back the 27th again and see what you think of it. Do you have any questions?
Can I just, on the west side of North 27th?
Yeah, it's on the west side, yeah.
Thank you.
You can see it, but you've got to stop and look at it. It's got elephant grass there camouflaged in it.
Okay.
I think we'll have Mr. Feigard take it back to Public Works and see if we can't have that remedied very quickly.
I'm going to the health department, too.
It's a drainage issue. It's a drainage issue.
Yeah, it is a drainage issue. It only don't drain. The water drains in, but it don't drain out.
Okay, thank you.
They probably pay a lot of taxes up there, and it's a real health hazard, I think.
Okay, thank you.
And you'll probably agree if you drive by there and take a look at it. If you drive by, well, you can hardly see it, but you've got to stop and look at it.
Okay.
Am I timed up?
Nope.
Huh?
Nope.
No?
Do you know the name?
What are we going to talk about now?
Do you know the name of the Startran driver so we can pass on a thank you to him or her? Did you happen to get the name of the driver who came to your rescue so we can pass that along to thank him or her?
I called down there. I got his name. I'm going to call him back. They didn't call me back. I think if there's a driver of the month, I think he should be it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Because if he wasn't watching me, I probably wouldn't have been here today.
Okay.
But I always find, I always find a way to live. Well, thank you for your time. Am I up?
You're up.
Adios. See you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else who'd like to speak, please come forward.
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government. The TIF is under attack. Two state senators, Groan and Davis, have already attempted to have something done about it at the state level. I think you need to be careful about how you're handling, handing out the TIF, because you may be in trouble with it. I don't know if you get these documents ahead of time, and so you have gone over them, and you know what the proof of the but for is. Part of the general plan for the city, the comprehensive plan, ahead of time. But I believe that you need to present that information when the hearing is going on, rather than just glossing it over. The public needs to know exactly how it was arrived at so that they can feel comfortable. What they hear is that the TIF is under attack for many reasons: abuse, misuse, overuse. So I would ask you to be more open, more transparent about how it was arrived at this point. Transparency is a big issue, and there can't be too many eyes on what's going on. And so I would implore you to reach out to the public with as much openness and transparency as you can get.
Anybody else who'd like to speak, please come forward.
Seeing no one else, I'd like to call for adjournment.
Second.
Move a adjournment.
I think you need to move it.
Move, I move it.
Second by Trent. Discussion. Call or roll?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
We are adjourned.